Introducing yourself, my name is Kelly Devins. I am the City Council Ward Two Representative and also temporarily on the EDA, serving as a city liaison while Michael Day takes the heat from here on out. You're up.
Michael Day, City Council at Large and Safety and Public Works Chair and Liaison for EDA.
Ted Erickson, Alderman at Large, Liaison of the Planning Commission.
If no mayor, I'd make some funny comment, but we'll keep going.
David Chansky, Community Loan Director.
Kevin Stunich, Alderman at Large, Council.
Tiffany Stingline, Ward Three.
Dave Pritchett, Ward Two.
Tony Beazer, Newton, the EDA.
Mary Kershaw, Southern, to the EDA.
Tyler Glenn, Executive Director of Bladek.
Wayne Erickson, EDA.
Eric Sharper, the Executive Director for the Brainerd HRA.
Jennifer Burtman, City Administrator for the City Brainerd.
Gabe Johnson, Ward Four, City Liaison to the EDA and City Liaison to the HRA and Board Chair of the HRA.
And now Sugar Day. And Sugar Day. Do we have an agenda, Mr. Chansky? I know I saw it on my computer, but I don't see it in front of you. That, you have the only one? Oh, here we go. Okay, so we've got the call order, we've got the rule call. We're looking for a move to approve the agenda.
Sell move.
Most of my Pritchett. Somebody from the EDA.
Aren't we in a workshop?
Joint Meeting First, Workshop Second.
Okay. Do you need somebody to read this for you? Let's get going, for God's sake. Somebody from the EDA seconded this. Eric, seconded by Sharper here from the HRA. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign, we're, we've got agenda, we've got three items. First one up is the EDA and City Council Discussion. I have no idea what that is.
I'll handle it, Mr. Brennan. So I'll kick this off.
Mr. Chansky. Just so we don't have to put it on a sign, I think we're okay.
Okay. So in brief, I'll set, I'm gonna set a groundwork here for us, for this discussion. First of all, discussing that the reason we've asked for this meeting, I think the EDA said they asked for this meeting, is because the EDA has been looking to do some strategic planning. Originally, they had planned to do this, let me take this off. Originally, they had planned to do this in 2020. They actually put some funds in their budget for 2020 to do so. Unfortunately, COVID happened and everything kind of got derailed. EDA was focused on some other things, did the Small Business Relief Grant and some other projects. As part of the 2021 budget, the EDA again put money in their budget to do strategic planning again, because they felt like it was a valuable thing. And on staff's recommendation, the EDA asked for this joint session because we felt like to, before we can dive into the nitty gritty of strategic planning, the EDA and the City Council should be, kind of get on the same page as to essentially who does what and what the council would like to see from the EDA. So from there, each of you should have, for most of you, should have fun of you as a packet. I'm gonna go through this very, very quickly. This is a presentation that City Attorney Lengel gave the EDA back in April of 2019. And as you flip through it, he just kind of goes into what are EDAs? They're enabled, they're created through state statute through an enabling resolution passed by the City Council. The Enabling Resolution, which is in, later in the packet, controls the EDA, but listing its powers, it can be modified by the council. Talks about report, the EDA should submit or report to the council every, within 60th anniversary. So the EDA does that every September. We also have in there, the city has the right to transfer control of projects to the EDA. And then there's, there's rules in state statute regarding HRA and EDA, while they are separate. There can be some back and forth as to functions. We have the EDA as an organization, how they're, how they are organized. They have a President, a Vice President, Treasurer, Assistant Treasurer Secretary. So they, the city's EDA was created, the Enabling Resolution was passed on July 20, 1987. The HRA was created in 1966. The Enabling Resolution was amended in 1988 as between 87 and 88. The City Council did serve as the EDA. So according to state statute, City Councils can serve as EDAs or they can create essentially a citizen EDA, but counts, at least two council members have to be on the EDA. In 88, the council amended it to seven members, three from the council. And then in 90, it was, 1990, it was amended again to, down to two members of the council, five members of the community, which is as it sits now. The next few slides, they kind of just go over the powers and duties of the EDA. This really kind of wanted to start as this is kind of gonna be our foundation for the rest of this discussion. These powers are, come from state statute, but are also directly in the Enabling Resolution as well. The EDA, EDA can hire employees, can contract for services, may purchase supplies, may delegate power to agents or employees. They can create economic development districts, contract for economic development services. According to the Enabling Resolution, which is, so this is unique to the city's EDA, all development must conform to the Comprehensive Plan and Official Controls. So the policies the city has that control development such as the zoning code, the building code, and must, plans must be approved by the City Council. Also, they can operate a public parking facility, that's in state statute. They can acquire property. They can enter joint power agreements with other entities. They can, they can exercise the power of the HRA if necessary. They may engage in public relations, may develop and improve land to make it suitable for development, may issue general obligation bonds according to the city, to this EDA's Enabling Resolution. That does require City Council approval, and that's also in the state statute. They may issue revenue bonds and may operate a revolving loan fund. Where again, the involvement with the city, with the city is the City Council's, again, the one that voted and adopted the Enabling Resolution. So the EDA must send its budget to the City Council annually. And what happens is how that is approved is that the council approves the EDA's levy, the art taxing entity. So that goes before the council for approval every year, before the EDA's budget is adopted. And the City Council appoints all members to the EDA Board. So, and again, with the financials of the EDA, it kind of lasts there. They have to be provided to the city and the city must audit them. That's just, the EDA's financials get audited the same time that the cities get audited each spring. So that's a little background around the EDA. In the back of your packet, you'll see those Enabling Resolutions, that initial Enabling Resolution, and then another Enabling Resolution, I believe that was the 1988 Resolution that amended it. And then there's also the 1990 Resolution that amended it. So those are in the back of your packet. Also before you, I also brought to you is a copy of the EDA's budget. This is as it was adopted in December of 2020. So you see there in there that has a three-year span. So it has the 2019 budget, the 2020 budget, and the 2021 budget. Per state statute, and it's in this presentation. Let me find it really quick. They said the EDAs are taxing entities, but their levy is capped at .01813% of the estimated market value. That's by state statute. Council could raise it, but they always go to the max of that. So that's where you get that $133,789 for 2020. That is their tax levy. They do have some additional income that goes, gets it up to about $134,000. In 2020, the EDA did amend or change how it budgeted. Previously, there was a City Administrator, the Finance Director, had part of their salaries budgeted in the EDA. But based off of staff's recommendation, discussion with the EDA, the EDA changed that because again, they are a separate, legally a separate entity from the city. So also based off of recommendations from the EDA's legal counsel, changed it from automatic giving a certain percentage of the City Administrator Finance Director's salaries to an actual contract, shared services agreement. So there's actually a contract between the EDA and the city to provide city employees to staff the EDA. There's also a similar contract between the EDA and the HRA. Those you can see in there under Professional Services. They have line items, some legal counsel, some, you see the strategic planning. New to 2021, the EDA created Economic Initiatives, Budget Line Item, and budgeted that at $30,000. Other than take half of that and are putting that toward helping the DDPC get the Downtown Coordinator position going. So they did 15,000 of that, has been dedicated to that purpose. And then that memberships you see out there, that's what they give, yes.
Question, is it a fiscal, like, I'm assuming it's a fiscal year end, what's the year end?
Uh, year end, it's January 1st, December 31st.
Oh, it's calendar?
It's a calendar year.
So we don't have 2020 numbers yet?
The actual, not yet. I could probably get those from Connie, I just didn't have that yet.
Connie's on. Connie, I don't know if you have year end?
The year hasn't been finalized yet, so we'll have those at the next EDA meeting to review. We're still going through the audit process. We haven't done the audit process yet, we're still working on year ending.
So that's the EDA, and then that, again, that $5,000, that's what the EDA annually, the Initiative Foundation requests that, and that's what they give to the Initiative Foundation. So again, that's a little background on the EDA. The last thing on background, the other thing that you have in the back of your packet is from the city's Comprehensive Plan. I pulled out the section regarding economic development. The city, as part of the adoption of the Comprehensive Plan back in October of 2019, has three goals under economic development. The overarching goals are to support infill and redevelopment through Brainerd as a strategic component of growth, support our workforce and help them thrive, and help local businesses grow and attract new businesses in our neighborhoods, along our main corridors and in our downtown. And there's a number of policies in that, under each one of those strategies. The other element you have in there is the Economic Development Chapter of the Comprehensive Plan, six pages. I won't go bother going through that. Essentially, what this, these six pages do is they kind of build up and support those three goals of the EDA, of the city, of the city when it comes to economic development. Those, what those six pages do is support those goals. At that point, that's our foundation. So what we're here to discuss tonight over the next 30 minutes is really try to help the EDA and the City Council get on the same page as to who is, essentially, we're looking for, who is to do what. As you could kind of see through some of that foundation, there's a lot of overlap when it comes to what should the city, what does the city do? And what is the EDA doing? The city and the EDA both obviously have a vested interest in seeing the economic vitality of the city of Brainerd. But I think also what we've experienced, at least in the last two years that I've been here, is sometimes some uncertainty of, well, does this issue or topic need to go to the EDA first? Is it an EDA thing or is this a city thing? So before the EDA starts doing a strategic planning process, we want to kind of clear define, here's EDA, here's what the council wants you to work on, here's what, and then here are the other things that should come directly to the council. We have a whiteboard up here, we kind of put up EDA, City Council. Jennifer's gonna be my scribe. Jennifer, before we dive into this, anything you wanted to add?
No, I think this is a great foundation. And again, I think really, just to second what David said and what I've heard from attending EDA meetings for the last, you know, eight to 10 years or so, is the question about what should the EDA be doing versus what should the city be doing? And as David mentioned, you know, our hope was to have this meeting in April of 2020, and the pandemic had a different idea. So I'm really glad that we have the opportunity even to sit here for a half hour and kind of visit about what the council really would like to see the EDA working on. As David mentioned before, they go into their, or their strategic planning initiative. You know, what are the thoughts here? And I will scribe, so I'll just jot things down. I think David mentioned, you know, sometimes there's some, some unclearness, I guess. Then we have a developer who comes to town that wants to do a business development. Oftentimes, Bladek is, is the organization who's working with that business. But then is that something that the council would like to see the EDA kind of vet out before coming to the council? I think that's one question we've asked.
Are you looking for roles or ideas or vote?
Vote.
Are you just looking for people to blurt out, raise your hand? Because I think the thing, and Gabe can speak to this, because he was involved with it, anybody can speak to it except for the man, is, we just don't have that kind of time, is the downtown businesses. You know, you got 50 grand, tell us about that. Gabe, I thought that was great. So far, they're all doing okay?
Destination downtown?
Yeah, no, that wasn't us, that wasn't the EDA, but I liked it. I liked here's 50 grand and a place to stay. And a bowl of soup or whatever, whatever you gave them, let's, let's, let's see what people have for ideas. I think it requires great intestinal fortitude to start a business. I've done it 30, over 30 years. It's not easy. And if you can get a great idea or any idea and move forward, get a reason to move on it. It's a, it's a, you do it, right? I mean, it's not, it's not easy, but it can be very rewarding and it can be very disheartening. But a little support is phenomenal. So I don't need to take it in front of you, you have a whole program.
Yeah, just to follow up on that, I totally agree with you that that should be something the city or the EDA could be doing. But yeah, we, it was three years, and Marie is not, is the owner of Naughty Pine Bakery. So she was one of the winners of the contest, the Purple Fern and the Co-op. But not even the winners tell the whole story, because we have Five Rocks Distiller. We have the Movement Garden Dance Studios. We have Yashur and Booch. We have a lot of people who, because of that competition, put a pen to paper and it helped move them along the path of getting their dream of owning a business a lot. And so doing something like that through the EDA or through the city would be phenomenal. Marie, you could speak to how it helped push you forward, please.
Sure, I mean, yeah, it kind of just kicked me in the butt to, to move my plan a little bit further along than I might have if I was just doing it on my own. But I can also speak to the DDPC, the downtown Brainerd Business Coalition, is trying to pick up some, some of that work. And we have, Jennifer sits in on our board meetings and Eric from HRA. So the Chambers phased out of doing the big contest, but we're hoping to pick up some pieces of that. Like we really, for Safety and Design Committee, want to do some sort of similar contest, but just for doing like facade rehab on the buildings, just to kind of get some of the building spaces in downtown just looking, looking a little bit better and getting, yeah, just getting that, if you're a visual person, just helping show the progress just through having better signage and other stuff we can assist with, with just facade rehab. And yeah, we're just doing a lot of programming and it's, that's part of the reason I want to be on the EDA is just be more connected with those conversations, to be able to share what we're doing and see how we can, yeah, split out that work and, and help make more progress.
This may be a probing question on that. How do you see and what do you see the EDA and/or the City Council's role in something like that?
I mean, helping with funding, this, the $15,000 we're getting for the Program Coordinator is gonna be really instrumental, because a lot of the grant funding that we apply for isn't applicable to staff time, so that's gonna be a really big help to give us a boost so we can get somebody in there. Right now, it's all volunteer-led, we have a volunteer board. So we're also running our businesses, and so it's, we're passionate about it, so we put the work in to get it done, but we know to make this a long-term thing. We really need to have somebody in there that's in a dedicated role to be helping out, help us run that programming and, yeah, just continue to have the ones that we've had, so.
I think you could put some, probably, as you talk about incentives, the city has incentives in place for a specific corridor, which is River to Rail. Do you extend that out? Is there, I mean, can you extend that out? You probably wouldn't, because it's, it's factored off, especially with the sack and whack up of what the infrastructure already exists in the downtown. So do you, you know, do you package funding with the incentives, with other programming needs, if you will, to entice businesses? So, you know, does the city own any property downtown? Or is it all individually owned? I mean, there are some options there, if the city owns that, to potentially entice someone. On the funding side of things, you know, you'd have to get into programs. I know with what the HRA is doing, there's some programming, potentially with the, with the Housing Trust Fund that could assist with some of that. You know, honestly, is there a different use? And maybe this is a question for Gabe, but is there some different uses for the Unified Fund dollars? Is there some potential there to earmark some of that funding? There's also state funding that the city currently has in place that could provide some incentives, funding incentives for the right programs? That's just some initial.
I would rather look at all this Corona money. Now, I know it's pretty specific on how you can use it, but I also know or believe there's probably a ton of it that's not being used. And I understand there's gonna be another round of it, because there's a ton of it that's not being used. And we're not talking about $3 million. We're talking about 50 grand for a bakery or 50 grand for, I would, I would stretch the limits of definitions to try and take some of that money to give it to somebody in a program like what the Chamber did, what Gabe described, what Naughty Pine.
Some of the early language is out. I think the funding for this is, the money that is coming is going to be, I don't want to say loose, but I think it's gonna be gray enough that you could create some things based on city's guidance on what you could use the funding for.
Mr. President, if I may?
Yes, David.
All of these are good discussions. I'm gonna bring us back 10,000 feet. Because I think really what our discussion here tonight, at least from our staff's attention, is this. Who do you want doing all these things? Do you want the EDA doing this or do you want the City Council doing this? I think that's kind of, looking at these questions, these are exactly the questions I think we as a community need to answer. How do we use CARES Act funds or the new funding that's gonna be coming our way? How do we support the DDPC in the downtown? Who do you want doing that? Does the City Council want to be doing that or should that be a project for the EDA?
Mike?
I see this as an EDA project, personally. I don't think the council is, is gonna be hands-on with something that specific. But the problem with the EDA is you're limited in funds. So the funding has to come maybe partially from the EDA, but something has to come from somewhere else, too. So I don't know if that can be combined with HRA or if we just fundraise. I think it should definitely continue, I was surprised it ever stopped.
I think it should come through Bladek.
Bladek, yeah.
Right, I know a little bit it should come through.
And, I mean, you've moved that, you've moved that state money a couple times.
Yeah.
You moved it from the city to the EDA, and now the, I mean, and now what it was spent, and now that you recouped it with your CARES Act funding, it's still, I believe, you correct me if I'm wrong, Jennifer, but it's in the city now.
It is.
So it can, it has the ability to be moved back. There's 110, 112,000, something in that ballpark, I don't forget, 122, maybe. But either way, that, I mean, it is a great program, we can do it and we'd be happy to do it on behalf, in conjunction with the EDA Board, and bring this to the City Council, to have the City Council vet it, to make sure that it makes sense for the city. But I think as you look at this and incentives and, and, you know, funding and things like that, it's exactly what we should be doing, in my opinion.
Tyler, I have a question for you. The Relief Bill that was just passed this weekend in the Senate, hasn't been signed yet, but it looks like the Senate language has about 12.6 million coming to Crow Wing County with much more lax restrictions on how it can be spent. Would the county be interested or would, if it's allowed, is it allowable to start a revolving loan fund? Do we have to spend the $12 million and make sure we never have it back? Or can the county have a revolving loan fund that businesses countywide can access?
That's a good question.
And if I can, too, in this bill, and we're, we're following it. As Gabe mentioned, it just got out of the Senate, there were some changes, and it's going to the House. There are some estimates, and I just want to say that word estimate very loosely, that the city may also be getting around $2.5 million as well.
That'd help a few naughty minds.
Could you just talk more?
Is it gonna be, do we know if the funding is just for existing businesses to support them or?
We won't know until after the bill has been passed through the House and Treasury has an opportunity to do some guidance. And Connie may be able to, I don't know, Connie, if you have any additional information on that? She's saying no.
So, the, oh, sorry, Connie, the early, what I have today, what I received today is funds being used by counties to respond to public health emergency in respect to COVID-19. So that is a vague enough statement that you can probably move that money into grants into different programming there, respond to workers performing essential work, make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure.
Oh, well, they fix our water tanks.
They might be able to, for the placement of reduction of revenue under certain circumstances. That's still open and tied to public health emergency. Counties are responsible for providing. The, the language says that it's gonna come out in two different chunks and that, that they have up to 12 months to get the second wave. The first wave should come, it's, the numbers are right now is 12.792 million to come to the county directly. But again, it's gonna be the county's discretion on how they deem the, the use of it, but if the city is getting some funds. Again, I think it's possible, I definitely think it's possible. They're asking for us to give them, throw everything against the wall and see what sticks.
Because if they could give Bladek $5 million to operate a 0% revolving loan fund for startup businesses, that could, that could be impactful for a generation.
Yeah, and we have the guidelines and infrastructure in place to do it.
David, to go back to answer your question of what should the city be doing, what should the EDA be doing? My answer is the EDA should be doing as much as it's willing to do and that it can focus on. I think we provide good water, good sewer, good electricity to our citizens, because we have a commission who's totally focused on that. Good housing, because we have a commission that's focused on it. So I think the EDA should handle as much of the economic development as they can, because they'll, they'll have a more tighter focus on what's going on. But then it all goes down to what they're willing to take on, and we haven't done that strategic planning yet either. I'll shut up for the rest of the night.
Who do you want?
No, I'm, thank you.
This one is clear.
Congressman Tom. So with that, I think how I like, maybe I want to summarize that is, is what the city would like to see the EDA doing is pretty much, is it, does the EDA, does the city want the EDA to pretty much be handling all its economic development? They want, does the city want the EDA, again, as much as they're willing to, be looking at, okay, the city or the county is potentially looking at millions of dollars in funding coming in? Is the City, is the City Council gonna be looking to the EDA of, hey, EDA, we're looking to you to provide us with the recommendations of how to spend that economically? Is that what the City Council wants?
You know, I heard you said it before, sorry. Well, I think the question, to rephrase the question is, does the city want the EDA, does the City Council want the EDA to just make autonomous decisions with any economic development? Or do they want recommendations to go to the City Council? Because BPU doesn't give us recommendations, other than a budget. HRA doesn't give us recommendations, other than a budget. They just manage their business, and the EDA has that same legal authority. So do we, does the City Council just want to ignore economic development, put all the money there and trust the EDA to do it?
I don't see it that way at all. I see the EDA as making recommendations to the City Council. I don't think the EDA should have that, that much authority. So I think vetting those businesses and vetting that money, but the City Council should have the final authority. Mr. Schiff?
Yes, David.
That's pretty much exactly the way I look at it, too. I like, you know, like, you have that commission, have the EDA do the light work. They're closer to those issues and then bring it back to review for the council. Because I know we've all heard, too, from constituents and, and some current and former council members, sometimes that, that gray area of how much authority some of, some of these have can be, can be problematic. these have can be, can be problematic. And, you know, I also like what Wayne brought up. I, I think one, one reason that the downtown program works so well is the vetting process for those businesses. So, you know, if we're going to be giving some sort of grant again in that kind of, you know, sum, we need to have some sort of vetting process that's as effective as the one has been for the downtown, right?
So can I ask another question? Thank you. So by statute, the EDA does have powers exactly like the HRA where really the two things the council does is approve their budget and appoint their board members. It's been, it's been different in Brainerd. I think it's been used quite a bit as an advisory committee. I'm not saying that's right or wrong, just saying I, I have seen that. The city generally in this situation has the funds. So the city had the one-time exception of MIT funds, which are now our economic development funds. There have been some other funding, CARES funds. So you remember back in May, the city got CARES dollars and allocated $400,000 for small businesses and nonprofits. But then they transferred that money to the EDA and the EDA did those grants. So where the, the EDA has a limited capacity to, to generate levy dollars by statute, 0.0185%, just like an HRA. The city does have some money in economic development that's available. I think another question is, is this a vetting thing? Do you want the EDA to say, here are some programs, here are some dollar amounts that we think we could use, council, would you be willing to transfer some of those funds? Or would you rather have the EDA just kind of be vetting this and then come to the council for each one of those expenditures? Because it is the city's money, those old MIT dollars.
That's why I think if the EDA is more of a vetting and the city council makes the final decision on how those funds would work, I'd rather them take the blame than me.
In addition to what Jennifer said, for example, going that further, they take, you know, one, one project that the EDA has been doing for a very long time, which is the industrial park, that is owned by the city of Brainerd.
Any other thoughts on the councils?
Chair, I'll type in, just really in agreement, I think the EDA more as that recommending, vetting, recommending body. EDA doesn't have the staff that HRA does, EDA doesn't have the staff that, you know, BPU does, so while the staffs totally have that regulatory role, I think the position that we're in, I think, as a recommend, you know, and I think, I appreciate David kind of pulling us up out of the weeds as far as going in. I think we all know the programs, incentives, all the, the longer list of activities we can do, you know, the goals are all right here and build off of, of this, but as far as roles, I think, I, I see it as a, I think that's kind of the question, I think.
David, you get your question answered?
I think, I think we have enough to work with here.
Perfect. What else is on staff?
That was really the purpose for tonight.
Well.
That was for my item.
We didn't run fast enough, David. Getting too old. Okay, if there's nothing else, anything that anybody else has to add to the EDA and city council discussion, otherwise we're going to move on to item five, which is the discussion on the Sesquicentennial. Anybody else? Now, EDA, you can stay for this if you want to. Okay? So if you want to go, go. Now, Mr. Tansky, are you taking the Sesquicentennial?
Administrator Bergman is going to handle this one.
Administrator Bergman, tell us what the issue is.
So, and actually I'm probably going to defer quite a bit to Mayor Vado.
Oh, boy.
Get comfy.
So as, as you know, this is our 150th birthday or our Sesquicentennial. Just some interesting facts that I, I found. So September 19th of 1871, the plat for the city of Brainerd was signed. The name on the plat, of course, was Brainerd. The city council held their first meeting on January 11th in 1873 and on March 6th of 1873, Brainerd was organized as a city. And we were officially incorporated in 1881. So just a little bit of background. So the Brainerd History Group actually started talking about the Sesquicentennial debut two years ago.
Maybe three.
And we've had a couple of meetings. Jeremy Jackson, Matt Killian from the Chamber was kind of coordinating some of these meetings, what a celebration looks like. And then, of course, like everything, the pandemic hit. I think our last meeting date was October, maybe?
Maybe November, probably November.
And so, so the mayor and Mary Divine Johnson with Visit Brainerd have actually done an incredible amount of work trying to help get this kind of organized. And I had attached to your packet email from Mary where she just kind of summarized, you know, what we know so far and then there are some items that are up in the air. And so part of the discussion has been that since this is a city of Brainerd celebration, what role should the city have or, or not have? So staff would just like to have a discussion with the council on what the role the council should, or the city should be. Should the city take the lead in coordinating this effort and be the official organization? The recommendation that came about was that should this be the official Sesquicentennial of the city of Brainerd? So as things are coming out about it, it comes out on a city letterhead. The other thing, and then coordinating events, I mentioned here announcements on letterhead, press releases, Facebook posts. And then what, if any, level of financial support is the city willing to provide towards this? And so with that, Dave, do you mind if I just kind of toss it over to you and what's been done?
Sure. Yeah, so obviously we're right in the middle of it. I think I saw the Dispatch, they had a great article about the rail bridge and from my perspective, as I've said in that article and in other places, that is really going to take this off. That is really kind of the start of Brainerd. That was the task at hand. That was why we were selected to be here and that bridge was created so that they could connect the Great Lakes to the western part of the United States. That bridge was, was finished 150 years ago today. And that for us is kind of the moment that we wanted to kick this off because that's why we're here, that was the task at hand, and that's really how the city grew up from there. The rest of it and the signing of the plat is the date that was selected for the Sesquicentennial at 100 years. So we're kind of just following in line with that. You know, obviously there's kind of a spectrum of different dates you could pick, but we're just following in line with what has been done. And from our perspective now, it's just a matter of how do we, how do we move through this summer, getting into September and what tasks, if any, that the city will participate in? I think from my perspective, it, it gives a little bit more gravitas to the event if the city is more involved. And, you know, I can gladly take that on from a mayor's perspective, but I think that having some involvement from the city is, is welcome. The other thing I would like to note is that I don't think that the city should be throwing over wads of cash for this. I think that it needs to be a community celebration and that we should be looking for other partners who are willing to chip in and have their own portions of this. But there may be some need for a little bit of money here or there to figure out how we actually align things together.
Dave, what about community action?
Community action is involved in that we are willing to be participants. They, my board did stress that they did not want to be the lead on this. That puts me in a weird position then as the mayor as well in that, what I'm being told by my employer, that they don't necessarily want me to be in that perspective as the lead, as a member of it. Absolutely, we'd love to be supportive. So that puts us in a position where we're just trying to find a way to make this group function as best as possible with as many working components so that there aren't big gaps in, in this moment in history passing by.
And I think we're pretty much hearing that consistently from organizations, you know, Bladeck, the Chamber, Visit Brainerd, I, I don't know about DDBC, but are saying, yes, we want to be a partner, we want to be at the table, this is a really important celebration, but we don't want to take the lead. I think we're consistent.
Well, and I think, I think now with, with Visit Brainerd and with myself, we, that, that lead has been taken now, but from a, a perspective of we're, it's a lot of work. I mean, we got a lot of stuff to do and I, I don't know if, if you guys are aware, but I got a lot of stuff on my plate, especially with trying to get ready for the Fourth of July and all that stuff. We as an organization from community actions standpoint, we have things we need to focus on. We'd love for those things to be a part of Sesquicentennial. We also need it to be where we have other partners as well.
What about the Brainerd history people? They do a great job with history week.
And they are, they are involved as well.
Okay, but would they be a potential to be the lead? I mean, somebody needs to come up with a, a set of dates and a schedule of events. Yes? I don't mean to oversimplify.
Can I?
Yeah.
Next, I know a couple people that kind of ran with it and they kind of had the same position, or the same problem, is everybody wanted to be a part, but getting people to actually organize and run things was always kind of an issue. But I think it would be nice to reach out to those people again because they, you know, just to see. It might come down to where we have to actually appoint or set up somebody that's in charge of history week, because I'd like to see that program keep going, too.
Sure. So that group is, is still together and its email that Jennifer speaks spoke of, that went to all those members.
We don't have that.
It was in your packet.
Here. There is a, there is a list of things that is already going. We're, we're well into this. I don't want it to sound as though we're trying to pay someone and having them be in charge. What, what this, what the request is, is that we can fall back on the city as Jennifer said, producing things from letterhead, producing, I, I can make proclamations all I want, you know, good luck, stop it. But can we please, what we're asking is, can we please use the city's letterhead for, and cities, some city resources in terms of PR releases and that sort of thing? To make sure that this is a little bit more official. I don't, I don't want this to be the mayor of Brainerd's 150th anniversary. This is, this is the city of Brainerd, the community's celebration.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ted.
So the question's in the packet, you know, what should the city's role be? I think we should be involved, you know, should we be the lead? I think yes, with all these organizations playing a contributing role. Financial, I'll leave that just for a second, but, you know, I, I think, I'm looking at the comp plan under, there's a chapter called community character. And it specifically says, seek small-scale ways to integrate community identity, use with local history. So I think that's, that speaks to exactly this type of activity. And I think it's kind of that cultural, historical thing that we need to continue to foster. And it's a citywide thing, too, it's not just. So I think, I, I think the city needs to be involved and I would say be the lead, at least in a delegating advisory role.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
A little bit of perspective on, on the group that has been meeting. There's a great list of, of events that are going on here. I think the group struggled with trying to figure out if this should be a centrally three, four days of the summer or if it should be events all year, which we have a lot of great events in and around the city of Brainerd, right? J.C.'s, had a ice fishing contest, we wanted that to be the kickoff for the year, but again, pandemic, just a different year. There are so many different events that happen. Fourth of July, Arts in the Park, Street Fest, BIR National, which has been a huge impact in the Brainerd area. There are so many good events. I think the group just struggled with, what do we choose? Do we celebrate all year, which I think that was the consensus at that point, was we need to celebrate all of this, but maybe we, we refocus and say, but also this three days in the summer, July or, or Street Fest time, to focus some energy downtown. That was, I think, what, what the group really struggled with. What days do we choose? And then I think once that kind of happens, I think you'd see a lot more traction. And Dave, maybe you can speak to that or?
Yeah, I think, I think that's kind of where we're at as well, is that what, what does this mean for the city of Brainerd? I think until, until the city puts some kind of weight behind it, you're not going to see that type of commitment.
Dave, I'm going to speak to you.
Yes.
But it's really to the whole group. I think you and one other person in this room need to get on a pony and ride because you're running out of a year. And if you don't come up with some of the answers to some of these questions, I don't mean you personally, but a group, Mary Divine, whoever else is interested in some of these historians and stuff, it's not going to matter what you pick because the year's going to be over. You already can't do what, you can't start at the ice fishing tournament, the ice tournament come and go.
So, and to speak, to speak to that, that how that portion of things kind of dissipated a little bit is that we can't fall back on events right now. So we have to formulate a, a net that is not based on events. We don't know exactly what's going, what's going to happen this year or what's not.
Well, this group needs to make that decision, quick like a bunny. If I could make the decision, if I was king of the Sesquicentennial, Sesquicentennial, whatever it is, I would do it in a week, like history week. And I would not pilot around anybody else's events because you've got a percentage of chance that you're going to have COVID problems, okay? And you've got to put your eggs in the basket that you can control. If you're going to be doing the ice fishing tournament and the J.C.'s cancel the ice fishing tournament, all the effort you put into that goes down the drain. The other thing is, I don't think we can sustain a year-long deal without a lot of people getting involved. Now, I'm just giving this as my opinion, I don't, but I'm trying to get this forward and move forward. I think, I think Mary Divine, I think your enthusiasm is phenomenal. I think there should be at least one of the person in this room, some of those historians should get together and lay out 10 days or whatever it may be, a short period of time. You can also play off of these other events, but you gotta, you gotta move and start planning something. We're actually probably two years behind. So coronavirus sort of sucks as far as that goes, but that doesn't mean it has to kill it. And a lot of it can happen in the newspaper, you know, bind them and die or whatever it is, you know.
You're, you're going to see, there's a lot of working pieces that are already in place that.
So who's doing that?
That, well, and I believe it says right in this email, you've got a lot of that stuff.
Teresa wrote the bridge story.
I just got the email.
Yeah. So there's a lot of that stuff that's laid out in those.
So somebody's making the effort.
Those are happening. What we're asking for is exactly what you're saying.
Yeah.
Is that we're trying to get that baseline, small period, that's what we're asking for from the city. We're not asking for the, the full spectrum from the city, we're asking for a very small portion of it, which is exactly what you're saying. That the other stuff that we're looking for to kind of put the pieces in place to kind of spread the wings out, if you will, that, that's all laid out here. But the, from the city, what we're looking for is a very specific concise piece that we can just fall back on. This is what the city of Brainerd is involved in, this is the Sesquicentennial from their perspective, and then the rest kind of branches out.
And I get the fact that we have a letterhead with a tower on it and we slap on your logo on the other, I've been, and now we have a Sesquicentennial. Then you have an event.
I would love to pretend that I didn't turn my Google thing on and, and practice saying it. And I still can, it still says I'm wrong. I gave up.
Ted, what did you have to say?
Essentially what the two of you are saying. I, I like how you laid out the week. I think the city should be responsible for that week, what you're looking for, the city commits to that week. And then there's the element that each of these other groups can incorporate. That way we get that year-long thing, but the city's not responsible for it. Because I agree, don't want to be dependent on.
So the council could use a liaison to this and, and, and probably the next step is going to be to talk about money. So, does anybody have, I, I see Gabe listed here, but I've heard a lot from Dave and Ted. And I would presume everybody could go to it, the first meeting, which had happened two years ago. Well, I mean, it's.
We're a Sesquicentennial.
We're, we're on it, we're just on a slow. You have something?
I do, just as a resident that has been in their, their entire life, I would expect the city to, in perception, kind of take the lead, even if they're sharing it with everyone else, I would expect the city to be part of it because it is the city that we're celebrating. The other thing, I do like your intense week, whatever week you choose, I think would be a good idea. And then to kind of tie everyone together throughout the year to make it easy, can you guys make a seal saying this is the 150th year so that you just put a little sticker?
Get the net.
He's gone.
Done, I'm done. Done.
We got a mayor who's on.
A governor that doesn't sleep.
Yeah, Gabe Johnson's got something to say. It's always interesting.
Yeah, I, uh.
You said you were done?
I was done with the, the other thing I didn't quit about. But, uh, in, in my opinion, it's unfortunate that the, somebody in the private sector didn't pick it up, the community action or someone. But if nobody is picking up the lead, then it is going to have to be the government. And one minute of Jennifer's time costs one tax dollar. Every minute she spends on this is one dollar we need to take from the citizens.
Hold on, no. I'm sure you have something more.
But, uh, but then, I, we haven't gotten to the money part yet, but I think any.
It's going to be next.
Any money part, in my opinion, and I'll just be done with the whole piece, would be a case-by-case basis. I don't think we budget 20 grand today and then see how it gets spent.
Right. Ted, that was my suggestion too. Jennifer, you had your hand up, and then Mike.
So just, so a couple of things. Again, I think what you're hearing from the mayor is, we certainly have very interested people. What I'm hearing from the council is, it might be nice to have an intense week of when we're doing things.
Or two.
What, a couple of things I wanted to add too, is that the, the, I'm not, what's the, Stage North? Is doing a play slash musical, kind of, that incorporates the Brainerd and Paul Bunyan and their candidate dates are the second and third weekend in September. And it was Gary Hurst's ask if, if that could be kind of coordinated with some kind of city effort. The other thing I would say is, once again, we will be hiring a communications intern this summer. And it's possible that, you know, maybe this intern would help do some coordination along with the mayor and Visit Brainerd. History Week, just kind of help, um, from that respect, maybe just be the person who that can kind of help coordinate stuff. I hear what Alderman, Councilmember Johnson is saying about city staff time. And I, I've heard this pretty consistently since I've been there. You know, being very mindful about what we as staff are, are doing. So, I, I just throw those things up there as well.
Thanks, Jennifer. Mike?
I just want to say, if we look back in a year, two years, and we didn't have fireworks at the end of it. Is that really even going to be?
Oh, don't even start.
We've got eight thousand bucks for fireworks.
Did you just poke the neighbor's dog? Okay. Anything else? Let's go to who. We've got a list of who, who from this room. And I really, David, I, I think you should be, well, be a part of it. You have.
Well, I'm, I'm in.
Anybody else want to commit to being a part of this?
I guess.
Okay. Tiffany? Uh, I, this doesn't preclude anybody else from being a volunteer and going. We want somebody responsible who says they'll go and report back to the council. Okay? Excellent. So Tiffany, thank you. Gabe, you brought up a great point. Does anybody have a, have a problem with Gabe on the, what he suggested on the money? Which is rather than dictate a certain amount of money, what's our, what's our money availability, Connie or Jennifer?
Connie? So we have the amount that, we budget $28,000 for special projects. And so it's these things that come up, you know, grant matches, anything like that. So we have $28,000. We've spent $500 on the, uh, donation to the Historical Society. And typically, we donate $8,000 from that line, budgeted line on it for fireworks. So you're looking roughly just under $19,500 that could go towards it. Um, we do know that we're probably going to be under budget in public safety again, due to corporate retirement and all of that, changeover in staff. So what we could have funds for. I do have an email into the attorney just to make sure that it is a public purpose eligible expense, and if there is a cap. And I did not hear back from them today.
Thank you. So we do have some availability, if the council decides. If they just bring it back, this is all we're going to afford, Dave. You know what to do. Anything else we need to do about that?
That gives me clear.
If, if I could just kind of wrap a little bow onto it. So it, just so we're clear, this is something that has been transpiring. This is the moment in time where we are now coming to you and making the ask. So this isn't something where we feel like we're way behind on anything, or that we've dropped the ball. This is the moment in time where we need to come to you and get clarification of what your involvement would be, so. And I think that we've gotten that. So thank you.
Yeah, I think we should, I think the consensus, we're going to have a vote. You want to have a vote? That the city should.
Work session?
Think, yeah, it's a work session, so, yeah. But I think the consensus is, of what I'm hearing, is that the city is willing to take the lead, at least figuratively. Why, Tom?
You'd like to make proclamation?
What? Since when?
So, I've, I've looked through a Sesquicentennial. If you slow it down, it's easier, I think, so. It's Sasquatch, so I like that.
Yeah, Sasquatch.
Through Rochester, when they did their Sesquicentennial, it was a proclamation by their mayor identifying the week as the designated week for their Sesquicentennial celebration. And then everything else fed off of that. But it was an actual proclamation from the mayor saying, this is our week based on history. So I think if you did that, then, then it gives you, the city, the opportunity to just say, we're going to say this is our week and run with it. And just because I've lived through it, that's all I'm saying.
If I was on the committee, that'd be, the first thing I want to do is outline Tom. And if you wanted to be a deeper time than the State Department Church, you can still be part of the promoting of that as part of that.
I will see something coming through that says, whereas of all 45 dollars.
We knew you wouldn't let us go. Ours has to be better than Rochester's.
More whereas's, more Sasquatches.
We'll just probably sugar daddies.
They did have fireworks though. They did have fireworks though, man. It's not a celebration without that. She liked the sandlot.
All right. I think we're done with the, with the Sesquicentennial. Wage grid pay system presentation. Who's taking us there?
So Chris is taking us there, uh.
Mr. Irving?
She is coming in, and I believe that Sean has heard of the presentation.
You're not interested in the wage grid, and trust me, this is the highlight. You may want to buckle up. Thank you guys for coming.
That's what I was doing. Floating a miff. Southwest state members.
But they're not using any art?
No, no.
Governor, we're coming right behind you. Excuse us.
I can't believe it. I blame the goat.
Feel free to spread out what you would like. Not that you don't like each other. Chris, can you give the email? Was it in the packet?
No, I have two papers.
You have it. Do you want me to flip email from Mary Devine?
Yes, I do have it.
Happy Halloween.
So. Just so you know, when the mayor kind of.
And I knew.
Yeah. So it's not like we haven't.
Finalizing.
We need that. It was going to talk to you about tonight.
One of these in Fridays, I'll do it with you. Things go wrong with the weekend, things go wrong prepared.
Feel like I'm breathing down your throat. Or your neck. Oh, it's fine, if you don't mind me talking over you. Okay.
Or not, Joel.
I can tap my back also.
Are we ready?
Okay.
Yes. Are we ready to go?
Yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome with me Chris Huber.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
The human.
So, in the last couple of months, there's been some questions about our wage grid and some, um, issues that we've discovered. So Jennifer asked if I would give you this quick presentation, just giving you an update about it. So basically, I wanted to give this to you so that you have some basic information about our philosophy. So the council approved a new pay philosophy back in 2018. And they wanted those negotiations for the 2019 contracts to include that. Um, I really can't believe it's been almost three years, but as they say, time flies when you're having fun. We welcomed several new council members since that time. Um, they're probably not aware of how or why we implemented it the way we did. So I wanted to share that information with them, and then also maybe it's just a good refresher for all of us too. So today, we're going to talk about the new pay philosophy, how it was implemented, where we're at, and then some of those hiccups that we've discovered along the way. So in our old system, we called it the Legacy Pay Plan. And what is shown on the screen and in your pamphlet here is just an example of all of the different pay rates and timeframes for starting rates for new employees. It was very confusing. And we also had some people that would start off at 100%. Should they be making the same as someone that had been here for three years? We had some of those questions. So it was very confusing and hard to administer, since there was no consistency. It also included something we called as longevity. Longevity is additional pay based on years of service. I included our longevity, uh, schedule there, so you can see how that worked. One thing I want to clarify is longevity. When it says you got 2% after eight years and 3% after 12 years, it was not compounded. You got 2%, and you did not add the 2% in the 3% to get 5. You got what that rate actually was. Longevity pay was calculated after the COLA was applied, so sometimes people got an extra penny or two because of that percentage as well. Unions typically, typically like this pay philosophy, as it, um, treats everyone the same, solely based on years of service, and it is not merit, merit-based. I've heard this described as, I breathe so I deserve. And it's not saying that that happened here, but there are some communities where people just let things go, and as long as they were an employee, they deserved to get that pay increase. We wanted to address that as well. Um, most government entities had moved away from longevity, uh, many years ago. In fact, Crow Wing County had gotten rid of it back in the 1980s. It just took us a while to get there. And we wanted a new system to help us with that. So what's our story, and why did we want to go to this new pay plan? So the city was experiencing recruitment and, and retention i- issues, especially in our building safety department and in our police department. If you didn't know, we used to have a Department of BS. That department is no longer here. We've renamed it the Community Development Department, but I kind of like Department of BS better. Just saying. So with that, we have a, we had a revolving door. With that, we had our, um, building inspector and housing inspectors coming and going. We couldn't keep them on staff. Police officers were still having issues, so we wanted to address that. We also have a recognized HR process that we like to give people steps. Little things to keep looking forward to, so that they stay with us. So with this new pay system, we had six steps where they get increments all the way through. And then that way is maybe an incentive for them to stay. Sean, are we lost?
Don't.
Um, under our old system, if someone was hired at 100%, they would get COLAs, but they would not get step increases until they got here, uh, got to the eighth-year step. So that really wasn't an incentive for them to stay as much. We wanted more administrative ease, so we have a standardized pay and step system for all classifications, not just based on union contract. Councilmember Hilgarth had previous HR experience working for, I think it was Sterns County. And under that, she had worked under a grid system. She liked it. She thought we should go to it. She helped us devise our system, and she helped sell this to the other council members as well. It was something that she truly believed in. And both Mayor Bedo and Gabe can attest to that, as well as others. But I know those two are the people that have really spoken to me about her belief in this system. We also liked that step six was going to replace longevity. It was a selling point to the unions. It was a way for us to buy it out from them. Usually you can't get something unless you give something, so that's why we did that. Uh, step seven and eight provides for, an incentive for our top performers to stay, so we don't lose them to, um, competition. We were thinking specifically officers and sergeants and things like that, moving to Crow Wing County. We kept losing a lot of people to the Crow Wing County Sheriff's Department. And then it also helps you as elected officials. You now can explain to the public, we have a pay philosophy. This is what we're doing. This is why we pay the wages that we do. So how it was developed, the council agreed to conduct a compensation study back during the 2017 and 2018 union negotiations. The purpose of the study was to review wages, since we hadn't done a full market review since 2005, um, and explore the possibility of a new compensation plan. DDA was selected as our consultant. What they said is they wanted to compare apples to apples. So they asked us to update all of our job descriptions, review all of our pay equity points, include an appeals process for both of those segments. It took a lot of time to go through, but I feel the employees felt they had a say in this entire process. DDA gathered information from their market study and their updated pay equity points to create a compensation system. It was basically a master table with eight steps. Similar positions based on market and points were lumped together. Each pay level for similar positions on the grid is called a grade. It's like a row on a spreadsheet. There, um, step five of the grid is considered market for us. There were separate grids created for the city and BPU, because BPU, after looking at market, is usually paid 17% higher than the city. Yes?
Chris, is this DDA that created this grid system two years ago, the same DDA that told us that our pay system was junk and we need to pay higher than what we have as a grid?
I don't think he said it was junk, and I'll get to that point. I think one of my points in here will help address that, so I'll get back to you.
Same DDA.
Same DDA, yes. Not the same person, a different consultant that we used, but yes, the same DDA. They had felt that this new pay system would help us reach market and also pass pay equity requirements. So on slide number seven is an example, or it actually is the grid that they created for us back in 2018. We applied a COLA to this grid and then cre- created separate tables for each union based on this information. So again, quickly, step definitions, one through four are hiring. Step five is market. Step six replaces longevity. Seven and eight are merit-based steps. Slide nine is a visual of a wage grid. But what you usually don't see is the percentages that's underneath each step. So again, step five is 100%. So if you look on the green, 100% under step five. And then please note how those percentages change from the steps. Step one is usually between 83 and 84%. It goes up four percentages until you get up to step eight, which is about 112%. And this, um, philosophy is for all of our classifications. So I believe you're already aware of how our initial placement works. I did want to include in here the actual guidance that the council gave us back in 2019, that staff can negotiate a conditional job offer up to step four. And I wanted you to see what that guidance is. So I've listed it there. So going back to Dave, or Gabe's comment, some position may require being creative to get our top candidate, especially for hard-to-recruit positions. So when we reviewed the market comparables back in 2019 for, um, our, specifically our city engineer position, we noticed that the city of Midji had said the maximum on their pay scale was 101,000. They started their new city engineer off at 107,000. They went off their grid to get the best candidate, the person they wanted, the person they felt that was going to take more, they wanted to go. A very hard-to-recruit position. So sometimes government entities go off their grid to get those types of positions, especially your department head positions. Yes?
Was Pemidji's grid two years old, just that obsolete?
I, I don't know if I would say obsolete. I would tell you that it's hard to recruit a city engineer. And based on what happened, maybe it was only two years of, old. I don't know. I didn't ask them that specific question. I just found the data, and that's what we had shared with you. So market, as we've said, step five impacts the entire grid. So if the number changes for either market adjustments, so if we need, if we need to adjust that step five, or if there's a COLA adjustment, the entire grid changes and floats based on that number. When we can, when should we conduct market reviews? That was something else someone had asked me. So as far as I know, we don't have a set timeframe when we said we were going to set, schedule our next market review. Staff's recommendation that you do it at, at least every five years. Now with that said, sometimes maybe that need to change a little bit. BPU, they historically do it every contract for their, um, electric workers, because they have to compete with Crow Wing Power and Minnesota Power. And they know if they get behind, they're going to be in trouble. So we look at that. Police officers and our police supervisors, sometimes they ask for market adjustments. We have to do a market review at that time to make sure their data is valid. So those types of things is when we may have to do it more frequently. So if we said we want to do it every five years, since we did it in 2018, the next review would be 2023. With that said, we have several contracts that are expiring the end of 2021. So for those contracts, we may need to look at 2022 to make sure how it goes. So I can't always say absolutely it's going to be five years. Depends on contracts, depends on union proposals, those types of things. And then also, we may want to do a market review when there is a, to make sure we are competitive when recruiting, such as the. such as the department head level retirement or resignation as well. So going back and double checking those numbers. And maybe I was wrong there, Gabe. I thought our our information was fairly current when we had done our information with DDA. I probably should have checked it closer when Corky retired or said he was going to. Something I've learned. Step six, so under our old pay system, employee would start earning longevity after eight years and the max was an additional five percent after twenty years. Under our new system, if they start at step one, it takes them five years to get to step six. Like I said, we tried to buy that out. Why would we want to offer this? Why would we want to include this in our pay system? It helps again, those employees gain roots. And it also, if there's a slight pay difference over market, maybe that's a reason for someone to stay instead of leave, moving on. Step seven and eight, the merit based systems. When I typed this up, I should have corrected what I listed for step seven. It should state, in order to be eligible for step seven, the employee must be on step six. And achieves and receives two achieves and one exceed performance expectations in the previous three years to move to step seven. So what that means is the employee needs to be on step four and get in exceeds in step four, five, or six in order to advance to step seven. If they get in exceeds on steps one, two, and three, that does not qualify for step seven. I wanted to make sure that was clear. Also, if someone is on step seven, they need to get one more exceeds to move to step eight. So that could happen the next year. It doesn't take a full three years for that. We also clarified the last negotiations that it is their currently held position, so we don't have another situation like we did with Mr. Coulter, where he had an exceeds in a different classification. We want to make sure it's right.
Question, is there, are we going to run into a problem years down the road where somebody's at step eight and gets a promotion? And ends up having to take a pay cut?
Well, the most they could go to is step six. Could there be a an issue? I don't know, Gabe. I'm not sure. I don't have a crystal ball that way. I don't think so.
The charts of what we, what step eight is and what the next promoted position. Are are we sure that there is that gap between step eight and step six, between admin one and admin two or whatever?
I have not done the actual calculation to verify it, but it should be darn close. And if there needs to be an adjustment, we can talk about it. Um, we, in here, you're going to hear a little bit more about, sometimes we maybe need to create a new grade. If we find there is an issue and stuff like that, and that's something we can talk about as well. I also have seen for pay equity, that sometimes you can um, put on there that you've had to give extra pay for a certain situation. So that would still make pay equity requirements, but you explain why that person is making the pay that they are. That would be a policy type of situation, so the council would have a right to decide where they want to go. Oh, pay equity is so fun. It was adopted back in the eighties, I believe. And I think our first report was due in the nineties. Pay equity isn't just that males and females are paid the same in the same position. Pay equity says that positions with similar points should be paid basically similar. They look at the entire city, so we have to combine the city and BPU's report together to make sure we meet or comply with pay equity. We have to file file a file that report every three years. We did that a little over a year ago. So we're safe for another couple of years. I did go through our pay equity information to see how we would work with our current proposals that we just negotiated and we were okay. Hoping that still works in two years.
And we are one out of fifty states that have pay equity laws?
The only state in the union.
For the only state?
The only state in the union that requires a report like this. And there are financial implications. So if we do not achieve pay equity, they start attacking our local government aid. So with us, that's a huge thing when local government aid is such a big part of our budget. So it's always something that we have to keep on the back of our minds too. So one thing I want to make sure you're aware is merit based pay in a union environment is very, very rare. And that isn't because, you know, they're bad or anything like that. It's just unions usually don't like this type of thing. They want employees to be treated all the same. They want everyone to be happy, um, you know. Two workers always making the same money by the same type of thing. So this was something we thought of when we started negotiating this. We heard and reviewed some other or learned about some other merit based pay systems. One of the systems we looked at was Crow Wing County. And what we heard was the employees were not happy with what they called fuzzy math. So when you looked at their information for their merit based, you couldn't see what you were going to earn and you and it went back and forth, so you never knew where you were going to be. We wanted our system to be a little bit clearer. So that's why we actually implemented step seven and eight, so it's clearly defined and the and the employee is not surprised what that amount is. Um, Gabe was with us during mediation last week. And our mediator actually said that he felt our merit based system seemed fair and was one of the best that he's seen. So I thought that was pretty cool. I wanted to share that with you as well. Exactly, yes. Um, step seven and eight, so going back, we had a recruitment and retention issue. We want to keep our top performers. I like to call them our difference makers versus our average shakers. So those people that are making the difference, those people that are making new processes, coming up with new ideas, doing things, you know, that are just totally out of the box, that are really helping us, we need to say thank you. And this helps us with that option. Again, if we want to keep them, we've got to have something to say thank you for. Management is continually reviewing our review process and forms to improve our system. Um, I believe you saw what we did with Jennifer's review, so you saw that form. We're right now in the process of updating that. We realized there were some issues and we want to make it better. So we're going through the process of that management is. We also conduct what we call a calibration session, so all of our department heads get together to make sure our supervisors are rating employees fairly and consistently. That's another thing that we had heard was very helpful in this type of thing. So we felt that this philosophy and process helps elected official justify the wages to the public. Brainard's vision vision statement is, is to be the best Brainard we can be. The goal of this pay philosophy is to help us hire and retain the best employees to reach our vision. And this process helps Brainard to operate more like a business. Step seven and eight, what happens when an employee doesn't like their review? That happens every once in a while, you know, they don't, they disagree with it. So we included an appeals process in the union contract language. Crow Wing County had had this and the common unions that we have with them said, you know what, that is really a cool thing. Look at that. And so we did. We included appeals process language in our union contracts. The appeals process consists of a panel of three people. A city rep, that's usually HR, a business or a union rep, that's usually their business agent that is negotiate negotiating the union contract, and then third party neutral. We had used BMS and we're working on trying to find someone else to help us with that in the future. So in twenty eighteen, we had two appeals. Twenty nineteen, that appeals panel also heard two appeals. In twenty twenty reviews, we have one. Yes, Gabe?
How many employees are on the grid system?
I'll get that.
Resulted in two appeals. It's a, it's a small number, not a big number, right? Two and very few employees?
Correct. Uh, well, I'll be there in a short and it's another couple slides down, getting there. So based on this limited number of appeals, it appears that things are working fairly well. Um, to give you an example, I talked to Crow Wing County just a couple of days ago. Their appeals panel are meeting for two days to address all the appeals that their employees have.
Where is this?
Crow Wing County. So again, similar unions. Yes?
You use an acronym for who our neutral party was, who was that?
The Bureau of Mediation Services has been our third party neutral. Um, we're talking right now what we put in the union contract language, since BMS says they don't want to do that anymore, is that it'll be a mutually agreed upon individual between the union and the city. We're hoping not to have to pay someone. BMS, we didn't have to pay. But if we have to pay something slightly, we hope to have someone with some municipal experience, they're used to working with governments and what employees are used to working under and things like that, so. If I can get the union to buy in, Gabe, you're right on it. Awesome. So the result of the processes, as far as those appeals that we've had, we've had the appeals panel change certain segments of their review, but at so far it has not changed their overall rating. So with the twenty twenty review, that might be a little bit different. That person is right on the edge. And if we change one or two things, it might get them to exceeds. But if they deserve it, that's what this whole process is about. That's why we're doing it. So we want to make sure it's fair. We give the employee a chance to give their side of the story. We get the supervisor a chance to give their side of the story. And then the appeals panel figures it out. The appeals panel decision is final. So what that means is it does not come back to council. Once it's done with their, in their union contract language, they are done. They do not get to move on from there. So um, as far as the department heads and non-union supervisors, we do not have any kind of appeals language in the employee policy manual, because that covers their employment information. So if they wanted to appeal something, they would have to come to the council. So going back to that initial step placement for current employees. In twenty nineteen, our strategy was, was for all employees to be slotted onto the grid at the lowest step that still resulted in an increase regardless of their years of service. So what that meant was we had some employees with fifteen years of service being put on step two. I want that to sink in. That's what we did. And we did that for a purpose. The reason was is we needed to be able to phase in some of this implementation cost. We had just did a market study. And we needed to be able to pay for all of those market adjustments. We wanted to phase those in. We also now we're going to have step seven and eight. We wanted to be able to pay for those, but we need to be able to phase all of this in, and that's how we did it. We said the lowest step so that you still got a pay increase. So we did that for department heads and non-union supervisors. They were the first group that was council's basically statement to the union saying, this is our philosophy, this is what we want to do. And that helped sell this. There is no doubt that having the department heads and unions, excuse me, the department heads and non-union supervisors settle first definitely helped this whole process. So with that said, the unions said, you know what, we get to negotiate. So the negotiations with the unions came up with, they wanted different cola adjustments over the years if they maybe could get an extra step. For the street foreman, you know what, if we get a new person there, if our old person retires, we want this new person to start at step four. We put that in the contract. For the unions, we also took account longevity steps. If they were supposed to get a longevity step over that entire contract period, we even gave that to them. Incentives for them to go on to the grid. That's what we did to try to sell this program. Utilizing this strategy, we were able to get six out of seven unions into the grid as um, and our non-union employees on the first try. It took Crow Wing County ten years to get their system. They could not get it at the bargaining table. They had to get their last group at interest arbitration. So those were creative ideas that the unions did. Promoted employees, we currently do not have broad contract language regarding promotions. Therefore, most of our situations, we follow the employee policy manual, unless there is specific guidance, going back to that street foreman starting at step four. Our employee policy manual provides that promoted employees are slotted on the grid system at the lowest step. Again, that still results in an increase in pay regardless of years of service. Currently, the employees can appeal to the council if they would like an additional step beyond that. So Gabe, going back to you, um, I have a series of tables coming up. So on slide number nineteen, I wanted to show all of our bargaining groups, how they are on the grid and the number of employees on the grid at this time. So you can see, grid means full grid. Everyone has to be on there and that was it from the beginning. Hybrid employees could choose, choose legacy. They don't have any of the grid at this point. So under this hybrid option, since we have implemented this back in twenty nineteen, we've had six employees that have switched. They originally just wanted the legacy. We've had them go on to the grid because of promotions and it was more advantageous for them to go to the grid after a little bit while, a little while. I do have a spoiler alert. So the spoiler alert is that I think mediation went well last week. And we have reached a tentative agreement with IBW BPU Union Group to include the grid for their employees. We are hoping that the union membership approves the TA. And if so, we'll share those details in a joint closed session with the BPU Commission on Monday night. So keeping our fingers crossed. So I thought, I I did several of these charts and I was thinking specifically of you, Gabe. I'm going, I bet Gabe would like to know some of this information. So Gabe says, we don't hire anybody at step one. We've got sick people right now on step one. We have several people on step two. So I wanted to share that with you so you can see where everyone was at. Looking at pay or slide number twenty-one. So you know where people are on step six, that's their max. But I wanted to share the years of service for people that are on steps one through five, so you had a better idea. How to read this is if we look at the administrative department head and non-union supervisors under the city. So under the table part, it shows a one under step two, under years in current position below step six. Step two equals one, so that means that person has one year of service. For step three, there's three people under the table. And when you look on the years of service part, it says there was one promotion and that person's been promoted for one year. There was a second promotion, that person has been in that promotion for two years, and then the next person had been there for six years. Step four, we have three people in that group. So we have employees with two, five, and fourteen years of service. Step five is two people and we have one promotion with three years and one person with thirteen years of service. So I hope that explains that. I didn't know how to do it real easily, but hopefully that makes sense to you. Any questions on any of the grids that I've gotten so far? So the next one also was thinking of Gabe. So how many people have actually gotten exceeds? And also, how many people, just because they got the exceeds, do, are they eligible for step seven? So looking at years twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and twenty twenty, on the city side, so far we have had twenty-three employees within exceeds even um, expectations on their performance review. However, some of those people will not get to step seven, and I tried to put those in the notes, why they are not eligible. So we had in retirement, we had people that get the exceeds before step four. We've had a couple of promotions, no longer in that same position, so they aren't eligible. We have one person who's not on the grid. That was their choice. So that they were eligible, they decided to not go to the grid. We look at BPU. At this point, I only have their management team information. I did not have access to all of their employees. So I didn't want to give you partial data, so I just said the information is not available at this time. If you want an update at some point, I can definitely send that out to you. So then we talk about hiccups. We've discovered we've had a few hiccups lately. So the first hiccup that I've thought of, and these are things I thought of, and maybe there's more. But number one, should the initial initial placement for current employees to the grid not match their years of service? So is it fair for some union employees to receive the adjustment? We talked about Glenn. I heard Gabe say he should have discussed that during union negotiations. Should we have union contract language that says that? Should there be a policy? Something we need to think about, how we want to do that going forward. We also have employees that accepted the grid as proposed initially without regard to years of service. Should we do anything there? One person I thought of specifically is Todd Wickland. Todd has been with the BPU eighteen years. He is currently at step four. It was what our philosophy was to phase this in. If you want to change that, that's up to council. You are our policymakers. That is something we could talk about in the twenty twenty-two budget, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Also, with Glenn's adjustment, some people are saying, should they be requesting an adjustment? Some people just don't feel comfortable going to ask for that. I don't know if it will happen. I said if they want, they need to go to council. I don't know if it will or not, but just to share that I've had some questions about that. Hiccup number two. During Glenn's discussion, I was asked if I would recommend that he be placed at step six as a new hire. My response was no. I didn't say why. I thought maybe you'd like to learn why. So when I thought of it, my rationale was, is that I could see him getting two steps for the current, um, excuse me, most recent work experience was for three or more consecutive years in the exact position. He had served as street maintenance three for six years. So that means that to me, he got two steps for that. He was promoted in February of fifteen to that position. Education, I could give him that. Based on his years of service at the department, he doesn't have a degree. But the education he has learned from being at that department for all those years, uh, I could justify that. And then maybe even another step. The next step is hard to fill position. A blade operator is an important position to our department and it's hard to find qualified operators. I could get that too. So I could have went to step five and I could easily say, this is why. I could get that too, so I could have went to step five, and I could easily say, this is why. That's why I was going to step five for him. And I highlighted those things on the initial information, but again, you are the policymakers, you decide how you wanna do it, and we move on from there. Um, hiccup number three, should there be a minimum threshold wage adjustment for a promotion? We've had people come back, twenty cents isn't enough, you know, there needs to be a supervisory gap, I want a little more. I've seen in some communities that they say, you know what, it will be at least three percent. With that, that's it, so if you should go up two steps, that's okay, just as long as you get at least a three percent adjustment. Maybe that's something we wanna do, I don't know, just an idea for you, maybe that would help with that, and then we don't allow any other appeals. That could be something. Hiccup number four, we talked about legacy plan contract language may be more beneficial than the wage grid. We found out about this from Marvin, he was getting more money for his out of class as a maintenance three than he was going to get. Right now, all of our street department employees are on the grid, it shouldn't be an issue anymore out there, but if there's an issue in other departments, we'll monitor and let you know. Current grid language allows employees to receive the same step that they currently receive for out of class pay. The example I have here is, we have a maintenance three person, he needs to fill in for our street foreman. If he's at step six on maintenance three, right now, he's going to get step six as our foreman, when he's filling in for those days. He may earn more money than our foreman, is that right? Should we look at that, another possible hiccup, something else we can keep track of. I don't know how often it happens, I don't think it happens very often at all, but again, just something to keep track of. Hiccup number six, employee policy manual language regarding the effective date for the step advancements for the new hires. We found this out after Jennifer's review, so staff will be providing a full recommendation when the entire manual is reviewed to correct that. Hiccup number seven, should annual adjustments after promotions be adjusted on January first or match their original date of hire or their promotion date? This was a suggestion to help as a cost-saving measure. Don't know if we wanna do it or not, it's an idea, let me know if that's something you would like us to negotiate. Hiccup number eight, why sworn officers, including LALS and Teamsters, could receive, receive step seven in twenty twenty-one? When everyone else had to wait until twenty twenty-two. Sworn staff right now have had three annual reviews since the implementation, they were able to adapt, adapt. And adopt, change their form, that's a better word for me right now, change their form, so their review criteria was based on our current philosophy, they were able to implement it right away. So their twenty eighteen review, they did it in the spring of twenty nineteen. So they did twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and twenty twenty reviews so far, the rest of us have only had two. That's why they've said that they've had three reviews so far. Should be corrected shortly, when everybody's up to speed. Hiccup number nine, we talked a little bit about slotting new positions. And Gabe, this goes back to you a little bit, if there is maybe a new position, maybe there's a new, we do some reorganization. And it's hard sometimes to slot people in, in between, we've gotta figure that out a little bit more too. Um, we discovered that a little bit with our lieutenant position. Not only do we wanna make sure the wage is fair, but we also need to look at that supervisor wage gap too. We wanna make sure it's fair that he's earning more than the people below him, which are sergeants. But then there's also the deputy chief too, we wanna make sure that we're fair to him as well, so we're trying to see what we can do with that. And then there may be some positions that we should consider hiring beyond our typical grid, going back to the city, but Midge. Is that something that we wanna do, if we don't, that's up to you, you decide what we're going to offer. So there's that. Addressing the hiccups, we will probably discover more hiccups as we go. Staff will continue to monitor and provide recommendations to address these hiccups as they are encountered. That is all of my information, do you have any other questions? I hope this was helpful, I hope to share this with new council members, oh Tiffany, I'm sorry.
Um, I guess I wanna know if it's working, cause it seems like we're still having the problems that this is supposed to address. So, uh, in terms of turnover and hiring and retaining people. Was it that much worse before we switched to this?
Um, so what I can tell you is, we lost was four or five of our top officers to Crow Wing County within a couple of years. And we haven't lost any lately, I'm hoping we can continue to retain them, I don't know. You know, it's still a test phase a little bit, it seems like it is working Tiffany, but if it's not, we need to come back and revisit this. Yes, David?
Add one other thing, it's like, for example, you, the council's seen quite a bit of what looks like turnover in the community development department in the last two years. However, a lot of that turnover has to do with, um, two retirements and one person that was relieved of duty. And then promotions within those buildings, so those ones weren't necessarily people leaving to go elsewhere. One person relieved of duty and two retirements, so that also plays that role, we've had a lot of employees in the last two years. Who have had the opportunity to retire and have.
And before you, our turnover was worse.
Especially in the rental inspector position.
Right, building inspector, we had issues all the time with those positions, again, the department of BS, glad we changed it.
And, and again, even in my position, you can go back to that, that was also retirement, so. Community health department is actually entirely, almost entirely different than it was two years ago, but mostly because of, actually almost entirely because of retirement.
And I'm hoping with some of these changes, we won't lose those people that we've got now onboard. We've done a lot of promotions the last few years too, and that is a huge saver for us, we already know those people, we know their work habits. It's a huge incentive for us that we don't have to retrain them with a lot of the background information, just about what our city is, so it's all good too. Yes?
My argument would be that with the way that City Hall is running right now, we will know pretty quickly what this system works. I think that our entire government as a city is running much more smoothly. And our employees seem to be much happier, if it comes down to where we're still losing employees, then we'll know that there's an issue with the pay system. But I think right now, the pay system is a positive.
And it's not always pay that sends people away.
Exactly.
The guys going to Crow Wing County are taking less money to go to Crow Wing County.
I would agree with our police officers for sure. Per se.
They had some other benefits at Crow Wing County, we just couldn't match, they can take a car home, no matter where they live. They can get overtime, they have a much bigger training budget than we do. All of those types of things make a big impact, as far as what we can do to recruit and retain people. Um, we're hoping, Deputy Chief Besto and I are talking about some new things that we're hoping it'll help that a little bit. So, um, in fact, another spoiler alert, I think we'll be asking for a, another police officer hiring list here shortly. So we can start another recruitment process. Gabe, did you have another question?
No, Kevin said that I was thinking.
Okay.
What did I do?
We said what I was thinking about the, uh, police officers.
So, thank you, nope, that's it.
Questions for Chris, anything we missed on any of our agenda items?
Just a question on process going forward, Mister Chair, you want this to come, these seven, eight hiccups? Do you want that to come to the Personnel and Finance Committee to look over how we wanna address, or do you want that to go to?
I think that's a great place to start, right, I, I mean, I'm not sure that's where it's gonna end up, we're gonna need some staff help, but I think that's a great place to start. Yeah, to answer your question, yes, let's see how we can go on these things. I'm not sure all of them are solvable with a motion from council, but some of it will have to work.
The vice chair agrees.
Hearing no further questions, before we adjourn, we need to, uh, just take a second, and Chris already spilled the beans. But we need to thank our mayor, Dave, Gabe, Chris, and Jennifer, we're very close on the contract with our. PUC, and we're very happy about that, and so, wasn't gonna mention anything, but you already spilled the beans, Chris is here, so. We hope, we hope that gets done, and then also thanks to all our staff tonight, David, Connie's on the video, Jennifer. Mike, Besto, Paul, Sandy, Chris, thank you guys for taking time off tonight to help us do this, um, we sure appreciate it. And now we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion by Stuart.
Stay.
Second by Prichet, all in favor, say aye. Vote saying signs, we are adjourned until next Monday, we do it again.